Thank you all so much.
Communications to a substitute report personnel report is always as enclosed as an attachment for review. We do have a couple of facilities type things. We're gonna show some pictures of Cameron. You can show the high school netting.
High school netting?
Softball, baseball field netting. So this is a project that's been, appears to be a small project, but it's been a very tough one and we found the value we wanted. So we do have the netting over the bleachers, we've got over concession area, all that, and it turned out really well as you can see. But again, it appears to be a simple project, but it's far, far from a simple project. It took quite a bit of time and effort to get done. And the other will be the columns at the high school, South Campus. So this is a project we started maybe a month and a half ago and the columns were drywall and they've been beat up over the years. So we worked with Mr. Moffitt in his little tech classes and enclosed those, it was a great test of them. But oh, it looks not quite over, but it turned out real well. The pictures are good justice, they look much better than that, but they look really good there as well. So that's just two very small projects that we've done recently, completed recently. Okay, so communications being completed, I'll turn the meeting over to Chairman Haley with item number three.
Item three approved, we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Item number four approved, made for paper sixteen, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Education, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Item five approved, only two, superintendent search service between Kentucky School Board Association and Jackson County Board of Education. Need a motion?
About.
Second. Ms. Haslam? Mr. Hickson?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Item six is on, on, on.
Action.
Action item approval of the Jackson County Board of Education new member, A D D, to be the Jackson County Public Schools Superintendent Search. Item seven, approval to accept the designation of R E G brass, Jackson County Board of Education Attorney, and approval to administer request for the pro con for new Jackson County Board of Education Attorney, motion?
Over and approved.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nickson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Last one, I'll be effective.
Come on. Come on.
Let me do, now what's our process on advertising on that?
I'll be honest, you do a make a request or proposal, so I guess, I'm not sure you have to advertise this as a professional service. So you can contact attorneys and have them do a request or proposal, which will include their hourly rate, the fee coming along. This is just off the cuff, you know, it's been, Mr. Bryson's been with us probably close to eleven, twelve years, so it's been a very long time since we've had to do this.
Item eight approved, twenty twenty-four, uh, twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
Exactly as I presented, if you'd like to speak, we'll change this.
Need a motion?
Over and through.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Now this attorney, what we need is set up a special meeting or something like that, bring him in.
I select up you guys. You're the one that talk.
Wait just a minute, let's go ahead, Eddie.
Do you want to talk to him more about any later?
No, not right now. Thanks.
Item nine, approval of projected Jackson County High School graduation list and projected Jackson County Middle School eight through the motion please for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hickson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Item ten, approval to accept the board meeting for circus, talking items to the high school, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Ms. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Nicholson?
Yes.
Item eleven, approval of school level activity defined budgets, budgets for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school, need a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Hickson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Item twelve, approval of deputy education department operation twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, blocking membership, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam? Item thirteen, approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five board, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Haslam?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Item fourteen, approval to discuss the board twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, need a meeting, motion?
Motion.
Second.
Ms. Haslam? Nicholson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Item fifteen, approval of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five salary.
Got a few things to explain on this, so Cameron, if you can shoot the SEAT forecast for twenty-three, twenty-four up. So this shows you the amount of SEAT money we got last year to prepare our budget from. And... Right here, I don't know, I can't see that. Can you sit and make it bigger? Right there's what we need to see in the middle. Can you see it? This was forty, forty-two hundred last year. And it goes up to forty-three, twenty-six, but we'll look at that a minute. But we got forty-two hundred in guaranteed SEAT base. Our transportation was funded at approximately seventy percent. We also got a nice increase on that. You run it through the equalization formula with tiers and we ended up at the very bottom with eleven million, two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So that tells you what we got coming into this year. If you want to go to the twenty-four, twenty-five SEAT forecast from T E? If you can enlarge that middle section. And Nikki, if you want to jump in, I leave something out, please hop in. So guaranteed SEAT, it's forty-three, twenty-six. If you remember, this current year it's forty-two hundred, so we got an increase there. Our transportation's still been funded at approximately seventy percent, is funded at approximately ninety percent. You run it through the equalization formula with tiers and we got twelve million, one hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. So we got almost a million dollars extra in SEAT. We also received a hundred thousand dollars in SRO reimbursement. For each campus that has an SRO, we get a twenty thousand dollar reimbursement. We have one on all five campuses, so that would be a hundred thousand. If you go back to the top, future planning, this number next year, you get another substantial increase next year and it goes up to four thousand, five hundred and eighty-six. Your transportation, which the twenty-four, twenty-five year, school years funded at approximately ninety percent, will be funded at a hundred percent for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So you run all that through the equalization formula, you'll have a substantial increase for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as well. So any question about the SEAT and the increase in SEAT?
Is that an increase? Did you say twenty-five or twenty-six?
Yes. What I'm, first one over is for the upcoming year and I was just going to maybe tell you for the next year, when you get ready to do this in May of twenty twenty-five, for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year, you'll have another substantial increase. Your SEAT goes up and also your transportation will approximately ten percent. So not only did we get a substantial increase this year for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, you'll get another substantial increase for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as well.
And is that put it well in guarantee or?
It's in the binding budget.
Okay.
State doesn't go broke, it should be there.
Sometimes they change us too, man.
They can, but unlikely. So I just thought it was good if you guys understood that is what. Hey, if you'll put the salary schedule up, Cameron, for just a second, let me work through a few of these. If you go to the third page and we'll zero in on number elf. Yeah, I've got an email and you guys did too, about elf. Rank changes shall be determined by September fifteenth of each school year. A rank change is where a teacher gets a nice chemistry, a rank one degree and increases their educational attainment. And when you increase their educational attainment, obviously you get a raise in pay. So if you'll go to the policy, Cameron, which is board policy zero three point one two one. Policy, please. Okay, here's our board policies. You see it's zero three point one two one, certified salaries and policy. Changes in ranking experience shall be determined on September fifteenth of each school year. So you see it's beyond the salary schedule, it's also in policy. Now go to K R S, one fifty-seven, three ninety. Okay, this is Kentucky revised statute. Down to highlighted area, the ranking experience of the teachers shall be determined, the key word there is shall, be determined on September fifteenth of each school year of each year. So, so that answers I think the email. I'm gonna step farther, contact K S B, I'm sorry, K A S A Legal Services, Mr. Young, and ask him about this. And he said it cannot be done, it's in state law, so it cannot be done. Legally it can't be done.
So basically, it would affect someone like that who was taking classes and graduated or passed it in the senior, so the bank.
But it's based on the revised statute, so you know, you can do it, that's completely, that's what I'm saying. So, the individual sent the email, I'll apply that. Any question about that? Okay, if you want to go to page four of the salary schedule, Cameron. So what we did, we took the SEAT money we received, we figured it backwards and gave the very best raise that we could give. So what we're recommending is on a certified salary schedule, a seven percent across the board raise. And we applied the seven percent to all these. A very important number, it's rank three, zero years' experience, most of the teachers come in, are at this level. So our beginning teacher would be forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight, so that's not bad. And our scale prior to the adjustments that are made for the upcoming school year, for certified employees, was very, very similar to Clay and Rock Castle, two districts are very similar to us. I don't know what they're gonna do for the upcoming school year, but there was a minimal difference between us, Clay and Rock Castle. Some areas we were higher, some areas they were higher. Any question about the certified scale? So we applied a seven percent across the board there.
What was the years taught in the state plan when they get the extra, what's the?
It's, they get the increase at year five, when they get tenure, they get an increase at year ten, an increase at year fifteen, an increase at year twenty, an increase at year twenty-five, and an increase at year thirty. It's right here. So if you want to go to the classified scale. As you know, a couple of years ago, we worked on our classified scale, we were high on the back end, low on the front end, so we made all the, those adjustments two years ago in preparation for being able to do flat increases or flat base increases per hour. So we applied two dollars and fifty cents to every sale. And so every sale, our lowest paid employee, our employee would be thirteen dollars, custodian, instructional aide, and your cook. Compared to Clay again this year, I don't know what they'll do for next year, but we were, the same, a little bit higher. And Rock Castle were a little bit lower, so this should make us, as far as recruiting classified employees, it should help. It's a really nice raise, it puts us starting off at thirteen dollars. But two dollars and fifty cents, flat increase, can apply to each sale or each, hour rate.
Part of these positions on salary, right?
What now?
Part of these positions.
All of them.
On salary.
All of them.
And you, we add the two dollars and fifty cents, that's considered forty hour week?
Thirty-five, some over thirty-five, our company back there, some over thirty-five.
Thirty-seven hour night.
But it's a flat increase, two dollars, it's me, so.
Well, um, I'm sort of wrapped up anyways. Why don't we, why don't we set up a special meeting for next year, it's not, whatever his name is, somebody's. And we've got some people down there that's been working a long time and maybe, maybe the increase will be too.
What do you want to do?
I should have said that, discuss nothing, but just say, is that possible?
Ever, this impacts all of our full-time employees, whatever you guys want to do.
Who are you talking to?
Everybody gets a two and a half.
Yeah, that's what, no, yeah, I understand that. I'm, I'm just studying today, I'm gonna talk to you.
So if somebody starts out, they start out at?
Thirteen.
Okay, so say somebody's been working twenty or whatever.
It depends on what it is, if you look at it.
Well, that's the same position.
Two dollars and a half.
Everybody gets two and a half.
Everybody gets two dollars and a half.
If you recall, two year ago, we made the adjustments, we were high on the back end compared to the districts, low on the front end. So we made those adjustments so that we could do flat raises, so everybody would get the same. Can you make that a little bigger, Cameron? Our bus drivers, because you look at your bus drivers, they start off at eighteen and they finish at twenty-three, twenty. That's their year, right? Thirty. I just want to start at fourteen on them, so.
Why, I'm just using the, the custodians, they start out at thirteen and then after, um, twenty years to twenty-four years, it's fifteen dollars and forty-two cents.
Uh, probably, yeah.
Fifteen ninety? And then max out at fifteen ninety-two for thirty plus years?
So again, again, we had a fixed amount of money, worked it factors to give the best raise we could do.
I think it's a great raise. I mean, I think, I mean, I think it's a great raise. I think post-COVID, a lot of employers are having to make adjustments for people. Like the starting now people, I feel like they're getting, it's a really good deal. I think somebody that's worked there for fifteen, twenty years and started out really low, even with what we did, I feel like maybe they're getting. I, I could see it maybe being insult, is all I'm saying.
Even though everybody gets the same?
It's an insult to get two dollars an hour from where?
No.
I worked forty-three years, hundred.
Well, she's saying if somebody started off at five dollars an hour, now see, you know, started thirteen dollars an hour.
Things have changed. I, the same scale I inherited, we made those adjustments. We were very high on the back end, so we made, two years ago, adjustments on the front end. Whatever you guys want, but be mindful, we have a set amount of money, so we, you can lower the front end, raise the back end if you want to. I mean, we did a flat raise, which I thought was fair, but not paying no one.
Well, the way I see it, thirteen dollars an hour for somebody coming in, zero experience, they've never cleaned a building.
Uh, not necessarily.
I'm just saying it's filthy. So they came in at thirteen dollars an hour and they're working with somebody who has twenty years' experience. And those people that have twenty years' experience only have, only make two dollars and forty-two cents a year.
We did this.
If they, yearly, you know, all those years of dedication.
So all of our employees, instructional aide, hook cashier, we want them to serve at least six weeks. So they have a background in that to see if it's a good fit for them. So we don't have any employee that comes in, oh, Turkey, just starts without serving.
But still though, you're starting out zero years.
What we did this to.
At thirteen dollars and then you've got somebody that's got twenty to twenty-four years of experience and they only make two dollars and forty-two cents.
And when we did this, we were very high compared to center districts on the back end, so that's the reason we made the adjustment on the front end. When you compare to other districts that are centered us, so, but it's whatever you guys want, it's your scale.
Well, you've got some, some of these years make it to thirty-one, forty, eighty-five.
I just wondered at some point, like if we could do a step up for the years worked, I guess, in addition.
Just look up you guys.
That, I mean, you got certified and then you got classified and it would be nice if a classified person also would get some type of reward, maybe four years' work and experience.
It just goes, I, I recommend it each year, but you know, we added, just like we did with certified, the twenty-five, thirty. We actually did a comparison, it's impossible to compare classified to certified, Nikki did a really good comparison. All right, custodian, instructional aide, and hook to rank one, can you just briefly go over that a little bit?
Yeah, when we done that.
Shoot that on screen, yeah, please. It's the BD. And again, it's your scale, we just, um, jump on it. You see a BD or something like that? It's book twenty-five, oh, you see something says book twenty-five?
Yep.
So we tried to do an equalization, looking at classified certified, which is impossible, but Nikki did a great job putting that together, so I'll let her explain.
So this shows, if you pull it over, is it all the way to the line? I can't see. Um, shows F Y twenty-four this current year versus next year with the raise. With zero years, five years, something like that, ten, um, what the increase in the salary would be. Per like hooks, bus drivers, and aides versus rank one, two, and three on certified, certified on that next level. If you look at it, if you take that average, it's around eight thousand versus ten. So that's as close as we could get to kind of give a comparison between certified and classified, the difference in the increase. The difference to on classified, do you realize it, twenty-two percent and fringe more than you are on certified. So you have to take that into consideration when you're sitting there looking at classified versus certified, you pay a lot more on classified on fringe. But that's as close as we could get it to kind of have a comparison between certified and classified.
Classified is much higher than certified.
You've done a great job. I mean, I'm not knocking that. I, and I, the world is different now and it's not just us, it's, it's everybody. Just gonna have to make adjustments. And if, I mean, this is great for now, but I think in the future, I'd love to look into, maybe next year if we're getting money, look into maybe steps for classified, if possible, or something, I mean. I think we need to recognize that there's a. We are, I think it's Walgreens, Walgreens, starting out, no, many, dealing with many experiences. It's fifteen dollars, that's what my daughter made.
They got any benefits?
No, you can get benefits for it.
They have that eight from the school, because she's walking.
She didn't say no, because they wouldn't work with the college schedule. Because they needed me. Yeah, she starts out, she started out fifteen dollars, only like from daycare and band, starts out fifteen, fifteen, no.
How come, I'm, I'm arguing this for years and I ain't never gotten over it, nothing matter if. We have secretaries in the elementary level that's making eight to ten thousand dollars less than the middle school possibly. Why is that? And I mean, I'm, I'm talking about that for years.
My understanding, and we have answered that multiple times, is a high school secretary has all activity funds. The high school activity funds are probably more than the middle elementary together. The middle school activity funds, the traffic of that is probably more than the three elementary's gonna get. Even though there's secretary bookkeepers, two very different jobs.
Big difference in.
Huh?
Big difference in job duties between the elementary schools and the middle versus them with high.
Well, I know the high school, I may not be right, I'm not this dumb, but they have a little help too, don't they, to, to?
For?
At the high school.
My knowledge, for bookkeeper, shouldn't have.
Well, I know you've got, you've got a elementary secretary or two that I mean, that do a truckload of work, okay?
Yeah.
They're all, they do a many job.
I agree, all of our bookkeepers are hot dogs.
So you know, but I can't see it being eight or ten thousand dollar difference in, in the pay and them doing about the same type of work. When you work eight hours a day, you're doing the same type of work, eight hours a day, right?
The difference in the funding that they, that comes through, the middle school and the high school, it's a big difference. Um, there's a big difference.
Like the actor school and all.
Well, just all funding that comes in.
Boards athletics.
Like you said, the high school, the amount, volume of theirs is more than the middle, in my opinion, more than the middle making it together.
And what they can keep up with.
Purchase orders, the middle is probably more than the three elementary's.
And even your athletic, you know, there's a lot that's involved, it's, you know, even athletics and stuff that comes through, that keeping up, you know.
All five do a great job, East and Gap Town or Middle School, High School, we do annual trainings with our secretary bookkeepers to keep them prized of all the ways. Things with a great book, etc., so, but all five do a great job.
I live again, though.
It's whatever you guys want.
Not, they shouldn't, I, I mean.
Twenty, twenty years, Nikki, it ain't just been four or five.
Well, I'm just, you know.
I tried this a long time ago, Shirley Madison here, and we got kicked down, so you know, I quit, I, I live again, so.
Well, unfortunately, there, there, you do have a big difference in the amount of workload between elementarys and middle and high.
It's not true. I hope so.
Is there a way to, my idea of the issue is that the stepping increase is not substantial on that. I seen on the one, it went from thirteen dollars to thirteen dollars and one, and it's every year, I'm just saying. What if we broke up some of that two dollars and fifty cents instead of it being an hourly, you know, monthly fifty cent increase for twenty years and then break it down that way, is that what you want that?
Background of how we did this, we looked at several districts to see what they pay, so we tried to make it comparable on the back end. They were much higher than the other districts, so we, like, adjusted the front end. We did the flat raise, I guess, two years ago, last year, so we prepared to do flat raises, but it's whatever you guys want.
But we asked, we asked to be comparable to districts, we can't compare to Walgreens, it's different.
Well, some people.
They can fund it, maybe it's different.
Some people would compare to all of Madison, which is not pleasing. You know, we compared Rock Castle Lee, Clay, Eschle, Houseley, motion to the districts. But we have some people that think we compared to all of Madison, which is not like sensible.
You can do that with property and, you know.
And if you, if it was a fifty cent increase and not as much a variety, say, as like a, or a fifty or something, and then for a increase for years, fifty cents. I mean, that might not be at all what you're talking about, but you still have issues with retention, he don't, you know, he harshed money on that right to keep them for that year, to, for the raise. Issues for that too.
It's a tricky situation if it was, getting people that will stay there for twenty years and they're making, showing appreciation for them, it's giving something, it's a good option.
Every day is a bust drop, what do we pay them on? Four, four or five every day to, to the district?
What a mess this is now, this bus drive, I tell you, we have a truck being buster out, they call, they call this not a pool, they work back.
Everybody has to work their bus drive, that's why I know. It's just not, it's everybody. So far, we've probably compared other districts with a bit of shape in any of, I'm, I'm saying.
Well, and either way, some of these people, that we could give to our bus, let's say next year or something, start out this, about too late this year, but we would give them some, can they work part-time, like mowing yards, doing something like that, if they wanted to, and make a full day out of it?
Thank you.
And we have some.
Sir, a little, I have a job.
We have some, so, different things, I just can't see before we are, so we have some, their instructional aides.
I'm just sitting in line, again, and I'll let her start.
Well, I'm just that classic dad's bus driver for the vision, and he, he also works for the family, so he does both, he goes and drives the bus, and he's on those marks for the family, goes to the box, gets your stuff, and he goes back to the bus.
What is placed at the first?
We actually have a little more work with them, I guess that's the part of, we also made adjustments to our athletic scale, like comparable to center districts, we also increased our sub rates, that's something, that's something you guys mentioned a couple of minutes back, so we adjusted the sub rates as well. So, it's on the last page, Cameron, I think, page twelve, I'll just quickly go through that. So substitute teacher, rank one, was a hundred dollars, raised it to a hundred twenty. Rank two, a hundred ten, I'm sorry, ninety-five, raised it to a hundred ten. Substitute teacher, four-year degree, who was ninety, raised it to a hundred. And substitute teacher, non-degree, was seven, he raised it to eighty. Your long-term, which after completing twenty days of the same assignment, you get an increase, it's a hundred, went from a hundred and twenty to a hundred forty. Rank two went from a hundred fifteen to a hundred thirty, and four-year degree went from a hundred ten to a hundred forty. So we made some really good increases, that's on the high end. All the districts kind of put their substitute scales together differently, again, from memory, that's probably more than Clay, but in rather favor of Rock Castle. I think Rock Castle tops, theirs at one twenty-five, but they don't correct it and have a different influence than we do. So ours, in my opinion, is probably one of the better scales around. But that's the changes we made.
Did they, did they price that lot according to the high school or student, like, do you teach substitute now?
I think so.
Do they?
They do. I think they're doing the student teaching, they, and I mean, but I thought they're trying to price a lot for that, that just invited substitute. They do, they do. You don't have to have sixty-four hours a day.
How long does that mean?
I think it starts, it starts next year, Nikki, so that July the first thing? Okay. I'm not certain, really, but it's probably July the first. I think it's July the first, but that's just something they did in the last year or so. Is that right, Nikki?
Right.
That's all I know. So, it's like any, when we do an increase, we do a minimum of a five-year projection, make sure it's sustainable. The worst thing you can do is give a raise, and after about two years, you take it back, you take a portion of it back. So it is a sustainable raise, and we do a minimum of a five-year projection.
This question is out of fifteen. Salary schedule, just a bit of motion.
But I do want to look at stepping, maybe next year, the certified, with the years of experience, if possible, I mean, just to catch them, uh, the ones that's in between. Where I work, it, it's kind of, we're, we're experiencing that, people come in off the street and make more than people that started off, you know, which, it, it's different times, I understand that, I'm just trying to.
Maybe you can just be five years. Okay. Five years' experience, and the place we're making more.
But if we're planning on maybe doing an increase next year, I'd like that to be looked at.
So Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Oh.
Ms. Allen?
No.
Yes, we do. Adam sixteen, approved of ten-year board of managers, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school, in motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Adam seventeen, approved of the public school, approved by the Jackson County High School, Jackson County Wood School, Keyon Wood School, St. Gettler Wood School, at the time. Give a motion.
Motion. Take it.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Yes.
Adam eighteen, approved of Jackson County Public School, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, English climbers, running, the emotion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Adam nineteen, approved of Jackson County Public Schools, planning the child nutrition program, the emotion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Adam twenty, approved of dual credit, remember in, in between Somerset Community College and Jackson County School District, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school, the emotion.
Goodness, good.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Adam twenty-one, approved of filing age of agreement between Jackson County Court of Education, U S Bank of Trust, the emotion.
Well, this is for the annex that was done on the kind of, I don't even know, it was this Q set bond, and what Mr. Hoss is talking about, Q set bonds, those Q set bonds were filed for a rebate, with term revenue system, get a portion of that back, so the Bank of Mellon in New York always did that for us till this upcoming year, so they no longer do it, so we're switching over to the U S Bank of Trust entity. In its manual, I think it's around three hundred dollars, we did file these, something like that.
Seven.
Oh, it's seven.
Well, they look basic.
New York, I think. But that's just for those Q set bonds, which is a really good move at the time, but we had to file for a remake, and they did it on that behalf.
Need a motion?
They approve.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Adam twenty-two, approved of the new big program for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school, the emotion.
Second.
Second. Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Adam twenty-three, approved of twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, South Eastern Education, Rockwood Leadership, the emotion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Adam twenty-four, approved of establishment, we have established positions, the emotion. Second.
Second.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Adam twenty-five, approved of field, the emotion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Adam twenty-six, approved of the formerations, the emotion.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Hyson?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Adam seventy, approved of, not, not that you signed in, Adam twenty-eight, approved